Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury zoning board of appeals. We're going to jump right into the agenda. Couple housekeeping items, just one for this evening. I need an emotion to approve a bill for $348.70 to the community advocate for the July 17th, 2024 legal notices.
Move to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Moving on to the public hearings. First public hearing is a continuation from our last meeting. This is to hear the appeal of Kevin Nisbet of 11 Judic Street, which is in the Residence B1 District. This is for a special permit to Section 4B to construct in addition to an eight tenths feet, 2.8 feet, from the side yard where 10 foot is required. Welcome, Kevin. You know the drill.
I do.
Anybody noticed Kevin is a board member who is going to hold an appeal in front of us? So proceed, Kevin.
Good evening. Yes, looking for a special permit pre-existing non-conforming lot. Looking to add in addition to help with an expanding family. Current house is two bedrooms, one bath. We currently have my wife and I and our son's two years old. Got another one coming on the way in September. So certainly can't fit everybody in the house. So see what the plans they have in the drive there. What we're looking to do is we have a small mudroom entryway off the west side of the house, essentially using the width of that, but extending backwards into the lot. The way I designed this addition myself, I chose this as the best location because coming off the back of the house, which would kind of keep us within the setbacks, wasn't really ideal for the layout of the house. Our plan off the back there, the two bedrooms and the stairs down at the basement are there. So to build off the back eliminates two windows, one out of each bedroom on either side, which isn't ideal. And I'd have to build a new stairwell into the basement because that would end up having to become the hall. Also designed it in such a way where it kept the ceilings low to try and keep the second floor of the addition low as possible. It's a one-story house. It's a hip roof. It's not a very tall roof. We're also on top of the street. We're the highest property on the street. So I wanted to keep the profile of the house as low as possible. Provided a couple pictures from Oak Street itself. If you're looking up at the property, you can kind of see in the drawings the new roof line of the house would only be, I don't know, maybe five feet, six feet above existing now. So it's kind of tucked in back away from everybody. And also putting it on that side of the house kept it hidden as much as possible. I didn't want to build as close to the neighbors and kind of be looking down at them because there is a bit of a topography change there from our yard to my direct neighbors. It's about three or four feet. So building up any taller certainly makes that even worse. So if you have any questions for me, let me know.
Thank you. Louise, any additional information?
No, I think that covers it.
Okay, great. Let's talk to the board. Any questions, comments, Peter?
I think he answered most of my questions. You have an existing nonconformity. It looks like this doesn't make it any worse because you're staying parallel to the property line. And the lot is really narrow. And the shape of a lot is something that we consider for variances. This is a special permit, so the bar isn't even as high. So I don't see a particular issue with it.
Thank you. Ann?
I agree. I think it looks great. And it doesn't really increase the nonconformity significantly. So I have no problem with it.
And Kevin, on the west side, is that conservation land at the end of your street? Or do you have an abutment to the west side?
Correct. It is conservation land. I looked into it a bit myself. It does get close to the 100-foot setback from the wetland. And it doesn't get close to that. But yeah, no neighbor on the left side. And off the backside of the property, there is another property that comes off Oak. But that's all the way in their backyard. Their house is right up against the street.
I don't have any further questions.
Any waivers involved in this?
I don't believe so. Nope.
No, there may be some of the typical stuff that's left off. Our plans, including neighbor information, utility locations, but other than that, no.
Okay, great. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. All right. Can I, assuming the board has enough information, can I get a motion to close a public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a special permit under Section 4B1 to construct in addition to two and eight tenths feet from the side yard where 10 feet is required at 11 Judic Street, Residence B1 District.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next hearing for this evening. This is to hear the appeal of Donald Stowe of 209 North Quincy Ave. in Shrewsbury for a special permit to Section 4B to demolish a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling and rebuild a single-family dwelling that does not increase the nonconformity upon property located at 209 North Quincy Ave. In the Rural B zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury assessor's tax plate 25, plot 007000. Can the appellant please step forward?
This is my complete first time, so.
Good. Well, welcome. We love first timers. Informal, if you could just tell us a little bit about the project and we'll ask questions as they come up.
We have a house that was built originally in the early 1900s. It has had three additions where we would probably consider the possibility of a renovation. It's a long, convoluted story. But at the end of the day, we decided that the really most efficient way to handle it was to take it down and put something up that was more conducive to our use. The location of the house on the lot, you can see, is already, I think, 14 and a half feet from the line. And the setback is supposed to be 30. The original architect had oriented the house to conform, but it changes what we're looking at. And obviously, being on the lake, that's somewhat impactful. So we were looking to place it as displayed on the screen, which is not the 30 feet, but it's certainly further away than the existing setback or the existing location by a fair amount. And that will give us enough of the yard flat to let our daughter play and so on and so forth. And because it is a fair amount of different grades, the slope down to the lake is pretty steep. Doesn't really, it's not conducive for playing ball of any sort. And we didn't really want her up on the road, given that it's a pretty busy street and 40 mile an hour speed limit. So essentially, that's the set of reasons. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Louise, any further information?
No. That side yard setback, they are going from 14.2 to 20 feet. Something to note.
Okay, great. Let's talk to the board members. Peter?
I just had one question. I know these, the lots around the lake are tricky. But just looking at the proposed plot plan, you're not that far out of the building envelope to the north and to the south. There's a little bit of room in the building envelope. And then so I was just wondering why not just shift everything down a few feet and be basically inside the building envelope?
When you say the building envelope, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Uh, within the, sorry, within the setbacks. So on the north side,
Sure.
you need 30 feet. You've got 20, but it's looking like on the south side, the 30-foot setback, it looks like you have about 10 feet between the required setback and where the structure starts. So just curious as to why you didn't just shift it south 10 feet and be inside the required.
The reality is that the way that the architect designed the house, it would, if we angled the house the way that we wanted to, to be looking more on the south side of the Worcester Shore as opposed to towards Brownie Beach, we would be over the setback. So it's a matter of degree. So at the end of the day, it would have been a matter of about six to eight feet.
Right.
So either way, we would have been here. So we figured we might as well
Get what you want.
put it where we'd like it.
Yeah.
Considering we're moving further away. So we were crossing our fingers. That wouldn't be, you know, a problem. I know that they're not here, but we've talked to all the neighbors and they've been like, "Please do it. You guys are going to have a great house. It's going to be awesome." So.
No, that makes sense. Thank you.
That's the reason. It was a matter of we would have to be here anyway.
Yeah.
At that point, you might as well just ask for what you're hoping for.
It's reasonable. Thank you.
Ann?
I don't have any questions. It seems that it's appropriate to the location, to pop.
Thank you.
So it's good.
Kevin?
No, I kind of had the same question as Peter. But at the same time, if you're going to try and maximize your yard, the flattest piece looks to be off the side where your deck is.
It's pretty much the top, you know, it's.
Yeah.
You drive up the driveway, there's an uphill slope. And then you go off, I don't want to say a cliff, but it gets very steep.
Right, yeah, and you can see that on the plot plan. It gets closer to the water there.
Right now, we have a swing set over there and a few other things. Someday, she'll grow out of that, but.
No, I'm happy with the improvement on it. So I don't see much issue there.
Tim?
Donald, on the application, it states that the new house will also be nonconforming along that setback, but more so? Is that a typo?
Probably. It seems to me that it's, it's going to be, well, it'll be nonconforming, but not as nonconforming as the existing structure.
Not as close as 14.2 feet?
Correct. It'll be 20-ish.
Is there any reason Graves didn't stamp that? Is this why?
We're waiting, we're waiting to come here before they finish their part, which is all the stormwater runoff and all the engineering. And we have a representative from Graves, so I don't want to put him on the spot, but I think that's probably what it is, is the logic.
What's the likelihood that the position changes?
It's not going to change.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
I have a comment. Your design is very, very, very nice.
Thank you.
Aside from.
Making her smile.
Beautiful. It's a beautiful home. Think you'll do a great job. It's in keeping with the neighborhood. I'm comfortable with it. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to chat with us? All right. Does not appear that that is the case. Can I get a board member to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a special permit under Section 4B1 to demolish a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling and rebuild a single-family dwelling that does not increase the nonconformity at 209 North Quincy Ave., Rural B District.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, it's one step further.
What's that?
One step closer.
That's it. Now you have to build it, right? That's the hard part.
That's the hard part.
Right. Well, good luck. All right. Our next hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Tzujat Sakthanker of 13 Morningside Drive for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, I'm sorry, 4B, to demolish and rebuild a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling and three variances to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7C, Table 3, for side yard setbacks of 1 foot 9 tenths, where 10 foot, 10 feet is required, and the front yard setback of 18 and 3 tenths inches, where 30 feet is required, and 1 foot 9 tenths inches with the, for the principal dwelling, where 10 feet is required for a new carport upon property located at 23 Bayview Drive in the B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury assessor's tax plate 57, plot 027000. Before we begin, is there a change to this?
Yes, the applicant, and they can speak to this as well, has sent in a request to withdraw the variant, three variance requests for the carport, so.
Very good. Okay.
Good evening. I'm another first timers, so.
Wonderful. Well, this is the night of the first timers.
Yeah, exactly.
Wonderful.
All right, so me and my wife, we live in Shrewsbury. We bought the property at 23 Bayview, last November. Several plans to, we looked at the property. We assessed the property. And it's an early 1910 structure. It has been a property that, based on discussions with many, has seen many challenges over the years. Lot of disrepair, and we would like to change that, right? So part of the change is really taking the current structure, demoing it, right? We looked at the foundation. It's not in any shape to take on a new structure. We believe the best path is to really demo the current structure, foundation and all, and put in a new home, a two-story modular. The footprint of this home is actually smaller. And I think I have some illustrations that the, the foundation footprint is actually smaller than the existing home. So if you look at the current foundation, it's like a 26 by 32 with a small two-foot bump out. The new house is perfectly rectangular, 26 by 32 fits within that. But the idea is to really change that with a walkout basement, right? Put on a two-story modular and really change this property into something that is, that is not neglected or unrepaired. We have removed the request for the variances and really looking for your approval for a special permit.
Great. That sounds good. Let's get some comments from the board. Peter?
I don't see any issues. I understand the challenge with the existing structure and with the site. I think the fact that it doesn't change the footprint at all and fits roughly, you know, where the existing house did, it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. I think you meet all the criteria. So I'm in favor of a special permit.
Ann?
I agree with Peter's comments.
Kevin?
Yeah, it actually seems to make the nonconformities a little bit better. Not by much, but it does. So that's always nice. Thank you.
Tim?
I don't have any issues with it. No questions.
Great. Okay. Public hearing. Any neighbors that wish to be heard on this matter? All right. May I ask to get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a special permit under Section 4B1 to demolish and rebuild a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 23 Bayview Drive, Residence B2 District.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations. These all need to be signed.
Will you just say that you're accusing yourself?
We have one more, yes, one more hearing of which I need to recuse myself from. So I'm going to hand it over to Peter, who will run the meeting.
So our next 6:30 hearing is for Jason St. Pierre, 34 Elma Circle, Residence B1 District. A variance to convert a single-family dwelling with an in-law unit to a two-family dwelling. So come on up, introduce yourselves for the record. Hope everybody's got their car windows up.
Hi, I'm Jason St. Pierre, representing Helena Carvalho and Giuliana Barilla. This is a, my client's recently purchased.
Before we get started. So we have a smaller board as a result of the chair accusing herself. That means that if you have one no vote, your, your request would be denied. So you have the option of continuing your hearing to the next hearing. We have an additional alternate member who could join the board, and that improves your chances of passage. So before you get started, if you wanted to move for a continuance, that's something that you can do.
Do I have to do that at this point?
I believe so.
Or you could hear and then request to continue?
Yeah, we could, we could hear your, yeah, and we could hear your case. And then you could decide after that whether or not you want to continue. And we would just, the board member who would join us later would have to watch a video of the proceeding to get up to speeds. It's called a Mullins letter.
Let's do that, yeah.
Okay, so proceed. Thank you.
So my client's recently just purchased, purchased 34 Elma Circle. Just a little history on the property itself. The house is basically two, two existing houses that's attached by a carport. The initial house was built at some point in the 60s. And in 1991, this board granted a special permit for an in-law apartment. And it was used all that way since my client's recently purchased it. So basically, upon the transfer of that, the in-law terminated, now kind of leaving the property in basically a no man's land from a zoning standpoint. So it's a single-family zone. They're unable to use that, that second unit at this point. The in-law itself was, you know, kind of unique in its situation when it was granted initially, I think. Just because it's not your typical in-law situation where you have an existing house. You know, you have like a lockout. It's all confined into one space. Where this one, you know, when the in-law, the typical in-law terminates, you can still use that house, and it just goes away. In this particular case, the, the other houses, you can't use it because it has two separate entrances, literally only attached by that carport. So it's, it's not your typical, you know, situation. So they're not changing anything. So the neighborhood, everything's going to stay the same. It's already on a double lot. It's an 8,000 square foot lot. It's pretty consistent with what's there now. They're literally, it needs, it needs some rehab work. So it's, it's going to be cleaned up nice. They're not really changing the outside, nothing, nothing to that effect. As far as, you know, variances go, we feel like there's a couple hardships here. First one being the fact that there's, you got two existing structures on the property. You can't use one of them. And the second being, there's a sewer easement that really runs directly underneath that carport. And I think that's probably why it was granted that way initially. So, you know, even if you wanted to connect these houses, you can't because of that sewer easement. So again, you're basically kind of left with this structure in a, in a single-family zone that's, that's not usable. And I feel like there's two distinct hardships here for, for reasons for a variance. And I guess I'd open it up at this time to questions.
Okay. Here for comments from the board. Start with Ann.
So I think the issue is the definition of an in-law apartment, which is a portion of a dwelling providing, it's a portion of a dwelling providing a separate housekeeping unit to be occupied by not more than three people who are related to the, to the principal resident.
Yeah.
So can you help us understand how?
But I think that terminates once, you know, the problem is it was granted like that in 91. So at some point, that in-law is going to terminate. You know, and it doesn't just run with the property. So even if, even if the situation was where the prior owner, I'm assuming it was their parents, you know, passed away at some point, that in-law has to be dealt with because it was granted that way. So what do you do with this separate structure that, you know, can't be accessed from any other part of, of that property? You know, I think that's the, that's the hard part because it was, it was granted this way initially. And now you're dealing with a structure that, you know, I think it's, you know, the, it terminated at some point. It has to terminate on a special permit. So then it's left in this kind of, you know, no man's land from a, from a zoning standpoint. It doesn't run with that property. It's not, you know, so I don't think you can just say, "We're going to keep it as a, as an in-law" forever, you know?
So is there any law on that, on that position?
I think it's just general laws of a special permit that it terminates upon the, the condition. You know, I mean, they had a specific reason they came to this board in 91 to get that special permit. You know, now where that's terminated, you know, I don't think it runs to the property.
I'll let some other folks comment.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what else you really can do here or ask to be done here, especially with the sewer easement.
Exactly.
It's not like it's an easy thing to say, "Hey, just enclose the carport and we're done here."
Yeah.
That's not easily done. And the way it's been built clearly is, it looks like two homes with a carport in the center.
Yeah.
So, I mean, like I said, I don't see what else you can really do here besides turning it into an in-law. I know we, as a board, have had discussions, especially in our last meeting where we had a couple. But I think this one's more unique than the ones we saw previously.
The sewer easement, does it run behind the property from Richard Street through there, between both buildings and onto Municipal Drive?
I believe so, yeah. I think it runs all three. I think it's like an active, there's a mantle right, right out front.
So the sewer easement by itself is not just incidental to 34 Elma Circle? Is that right?
Exactly.
So it affects other, other homeowners behind you? Behind 34 Elma?
My understanding, yeah. I talked to the sewer commissioner, so.
Okay. Was there any exploration of trying to do anything to combine the, the two buildings?
I didn't, just because I don't think you can build on top of it just because with that active sewer easement.
I mean, exploration of connecting the two, the two buildings on the property, where the carport is.
I haven't, just because, again, I don't think you could, if you connected them, then you're going to build right on top of that sewer easement. I don't think that would be allowed.
So if, so if the application is to change of use to two-family, can you speak to the plans for the property in the future?
My client's just plans to, they have, one of the properties is rented out and they're, they're going to just rent out the other property.
So they're both, they'll both be rental properties?
Correct.
So they won't be living there?
No.
So I think the, um, the issue of two families has come up a number of times over the last few years for the board. I think the difficulty that I'm having is that I, I understand under our bylaws, a special permit for an in-law automatically terminates, as you mentioned, on the sale of the property. I don't know what was represented to your clients about what the status of these two structures would be, but, you know, the government assumes that people know the law or will inform themselves of the law, do their diligence when they, when they buy a property or do anything else. So they had constructive notice essentially that when they purchased this, the in-law would no longer exist and it would be a single-family dwelling comprised of two homes on one property. So, you know, again, don't know anything about what was represented by the seller, So, you know, again, don't know anything about what was represented by the seller, but that, that's the sort of legal landscape.
Yeah.
So, I think it's, it's challenging for me to, to come to the idea that knowing that going, knowing going in that the in-law would no longer apply and that you're essentially purchasing these two structures, that after purchings, purchasing it, you would now claim that it's a hardship.
Yeah, I think the only, and, and I, I guess I would agree with you in a standpoint if, and I've seen that before where you have a situation where they purchase it, it's listed as a single family, they think it's a two-family, they then go to do some work and all of a sudden this comes up to this board.
Right.
And then I would agree with you. It says it's, it's clearly a single family and you're trying to now convert it to a two-family. There's no, there's no real hardship there.
Yeah.
In my mind. In, in this case, I feel like it's different though, because I think this is not, um, you know, the, I think you're, the, um, assessor listed as multi-house, I think that's how it's referred to, you know, and, and, you know, I guess I go back to the same thing. I mean, regardless, it, it had to have been dealt with, you know, and I think it's unreasonable to hold it to an in-law situation because even the former owner at some point is gonna sit there with the house and say, you know, what do I do with this thing? Now my parents have either moved on or, you know, passed away. And then what do you do with the structure?
Right.
You know? So then I, I don't think you can, and either way, you still have to come back to the board and say, you know, whoever's gonna buy it, I'm gonna buy it and put, you know, X number of family members in here. Well, it's just, it's just a unique situation. And I think, and I think the bigger issue is, is the fact it was granted that way initially. You know, it's not like, it's not like you can use this special permit now for an in-law and then terminates and say, go ahead and, you know, put a basement down there or a playroom or something and it goes away.
Right.
Now it's like you, you know, in my mind, it maybe should have, the, the carport's an interesting dynamic because obviously they looked at the sewer easement and said, you can't do this now for the in-law, but you could put a carport, attach it.
So we can still access the sewer. Yeah, right.
And now here we are thirty-three years later, so.
So looking, sorry to interrupt, but it, so just looking at the, um, what appears to be the original sewer document when they put this in, the property was split by eminent domain.
Oh, interesting.
If that affects anybody's reasoning on anything.
Well, I think, um, I guess the question I have, um, for town staff, is this a situation where you could subdivide this lot and put the two houses on separate lots? Is that, is that allowed in this area?
I, I wouldn't be able to answer that question without, you know, an A and R plan in front of me to show.
Right.
I thought of that as well. I thought of that just to, not to cut you off, but I, but I thought the same thing.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think.
And the issue is though, is then you're, you're, you have a pre-existing non-conforming lot on one house, which, which would work, the existing house. And then the second house is, is, you know, you don't have set patch, you don't have square footage, like your, everything, your frontage is off. Like it's, it's, you're asking for, I think, a lot more, um, relief at that point, to be honest.
Right. Then you're just creating another hardship for yourself.
Yeah.
And I actually don't think there's a, even a hardship at that point, to be honest, because then you're, you don't have a sewer easement that's connecting them, you know? And at that point, you're, 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 I think, making a worse argument to be honest.
Right. Yeah. I, I understand the dilemma. I think the, the, um, the issue that I struggle with is that, that, again, constructively, we presume that folks knew this coming in to purchasing it. But I also hear what you're saying that one way or another, you'd have to deal with it. Whoever purchased it would have to either apply for an in-law and have it be an in-law, and that's maybe a very narrow slice of the population to whom that property would be marketable. And is that something that's desirable from the town's standpoint? Or do you deal with it this way?
Exactly.
So, well, I'll, I'll stop there. This is a public hearing. So, um, if anyone from the community wishes to come up, identify yourself, name and address, and, and share your thoughts with us, we will come in. Kevin? If you, if you could come up to the microphone, sir, and, and identify yourself, that'd be helpful. Or Kevin, actually, yeah, I understand.
Do me an enormous favor and let me sit down and speak very, very loudly.
No problem.
It'll be a twenty-minute trip over.
That's okay. Sure.
Is that permissible?
Absolutely.
All right. My name is Kevin Byrne. This is my wife, Virginia Byrne. Virginia and Kevin have lived at twenty-two Elma Circle, which is one, two, three houses back from this property. And he'd even driven by, there's a marvelous, a gophers pond in front of the house with waterfalls. I, I, so this is clear to everybody. I am an associate member of the zoning board of appeals and actually was called upon, you know, to sit tonight. And I obviously said, no, I'm not gonna do that because that to me is a bit of a conflict and I felt not even my ability to sit up there and then come down and make an argument would be appropriate. I have, I think, a substantial background on, on this situation. Back in, uh, the nineteen nineties, I represented Buck Condon and his wife Grace, who lived in that single-family house that was there for a number of years. They had reached the stage in which, uh, Grace, who was an absolutely delightful woman, everybody in the street absolutely loved her. It was a neighborhood. It was a single, a single-family neighborhood, by the way. And she was a delight. She was a delight. At church, everything we knew about Grace was wonderful. Uh, she reached the stage at which she said they were, they had three, they had three kids. Okay. And they were all living in this, this house that was built again, probably in the sixties or the early fifties, in the fifties or the late fifties. Sixties, early fifties. Uh, Buck came to me and said, we really wanna do an in-law apartment, okay? Grace is at the stage when she says she needs a little more space, okay? And their original idea was to put it right to, as you face the house, right to the left of the house, with it, driveways, and just do an add-on there and it would be an appropriate in-law apartment. They said, Kev, what should we do? I said, well, let me go up to the town hall. My answer to everything in those days was, let me go up to the town hall. So I went up to the town hall, talked to the then-town engineer, Mr. Holland, several other people, buildings, back to the rest of it. And what was determined is that there was an active, working sewer line and a sewer easement owned by the town of Schrissbury that literally ran the length of the driveway from someplace in the west down probably Daniel Road to someplace in the east, okay? It was active and working back in the nineties. It apparently is still actively working and the rest of it. And obviously you can't put a building on top of an easement. So then the second suggestion, uh, that I had made was, well, can we do an in-law facility on the other side of the easement tied in with a roof, which we did. I mean, which is the second thing we came up with, okay? And that would basically, the houses are very, very close to each other, the physical, each of the buildings are very, very close to each other. And that was the workable situation. Uh, when, uh, we came in with a plan, there was, uh, substantial, all the neighbors were, were substantially opposed to this. Most importantly, uh, the nice folks who lived on the furth property on, on, uh, on Elma Circle that's adjacent at the end of the property of this property to the, the Mosses, who said, no, no, you're putting a house in there. And this is gonna be a whole separate house. And, uh, it literally reached the stage of litigating, almost litigation, okay? I had the condens, uh, the Mosses had a very talented lawyer, the city, the city of Worcester. I've known him. We worked on zoning matters prior to that. And we managed to work out and an agreement. There may have been other agreements made with the Mosses, but the one that was more important to me was an absolute promise and guarantee that that property would never be used for anything but an in-law apartment, okay? And I think at that stage, we didn't actually wind up caught, but we, we were arguing pretty strenuous about this because again, it was a separate property on a single family, on a single lot, okay? So we worked out this agreement that it would be forever an in-law apartment, forever. Well, it almost made forever. Grace lived in it for a substantial number of years. I can't remember how many years. She was a delight. She got around. And then as she got more elderly, it was more difficult for her to get around. And, but she was there in her own facility, right adjacent to her family, in an in-law structure. Uh, she passed away. At the time she passed away, uh, we said, okay, what's gonna happen now? And they said, Tommy, one of their sons, said, who had been living in the house, said, I'll be there. I'm an in-law. And the rule, quite frankly, for in-law, for in-law apartments is blood or marriage. Those are the rules, okay? It was a, a, a marriage and then it was obviously blood. That continued on until such time that Buck passed away. And when Buck passed away, uh, the issue was it went to their daughter. The property became owned, I think, by, by their, by their daughter, who was married at that time. And she and her, her husband and children resided there with Tommy next door, okay, in, in, in the apartment. That lasted until a couple of years ago. And the condens discovered this substantial water problem in the house itself. And pity you live in the neighborhood, so you may have, might have seen, all of the trucks were down there. There were, there were leaks. The cellar was flooded. Nobody knew how to fix it. The water department was there. Everybody was there. Everybody, contractors and the rest of it. Nobody could figure out how to resolve this issue. And the house, literally, it had, it had gone on so long, became uninhabitable, okay? And finally, they said, look, we've had enough of this, okay? We can't go through this anymore. They had, I think, a child or a relative who lived up in the Peavy area. He said, okay, we gotta move up there. They put the house on the market and it was basically, having talked to him, he says, whatever I get, I get and I don't care. I just want this over with, okay? Tons of people came and looked at it, mostly contractors who were looking at it, obviously as a, as a serapak kind of situation. And ultimately, uh, this young man that's sitting ahead of me purchased the property. And he purchased it in, in all fairness, for a substantially reduced price. Somewhere in the high threes or the fours, or the fours, for, for this entire property, which was there. Then that was the end of that situation. So that's kind of the history behind the whole. It has been used as an in-law apartment since its construction in nineteen ninety-one. So it's been an in-law apartment pursuant to a, a special permit for forty-four years. And let me tell you a little bit about it.
Well, Mr. Byrne, I do have a question. You mentioned, uh, an agreement, um, between the property owners. Was that ever recorded?
No.
No.
It was not, there was nothing, there was nothing that I know of that was ever written, and I was Buck's lawyer. It was an agreement. The Mosses may know more about what happened from their side back at that time, okay? This has been a single-family neighborhood since Weeble began in nineteen sixty-seven. Weeble lived in twenty-two Elma Circle since July third, nineteen sixty-seven, with the oldest people and with, highly oldest. Virginia's not as old as I am. Uh, uh, we've lived in the same house. It's not the same house there was when we bought it in nineteen sixty-seven. But it was enabled, like, it was all single-family homes. Some of them, a lot of them that were, were built, were built prior to the creation of the zoning bylaws. Except our house is, it's a twelve thousand five hundred square foot lot requirement, you know, requirement. Our lot is about eleven thousand square feet. We own the house next door, uh, where my daughter, uh, is residing. And that's about eight thousand square feet. There are other properties that are substantially larger, like this one, which is sixteen thousand square feet, okay? It's always been a single-family neighborhood. The zoning bylaw says it is to be a single-family residence neighborhood. You cannot, by our zoning bylaw, uh, put two separate residents on one lot. It is prohibited. It's the reason for this variance.
Right. Just, um, to make sure that everyone has a chance, um, to, to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak who wants to speak, if you wouldn't mind.
I'm ready to talk to you.
Yes.
I, I've got some legal arguments that I can talk about, if you dare call up.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we let everybody have a chance first to go and then, if we have time? Anybody else like to, um, make any comments? Um, and if you're, and if you're willing and able to come up to the microphone, please do, anyone? And just your name and address, if you could, for the record.
This was work?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, my name is Paul Dobner. I live at twenty-three Elma Circle. A bit diagonal to the, uh, thirty-four in question. Couple of comments on the plan. Um, first of all, I have a question on the plan. The plot plan's shown up on the screen there. And it shows a dotted line separating the two homes. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering if that is a, if that's gonna be the ultimate proposed property line or whether that's just a, uh, an imaginary line?
Uh, Mr. St. Pierre?
I think that's the sewer line, isn't it?
Yes.
Is that the sewer line, the dotted line? Okay.
Folks just.
So it, it, it had the dimensions of each property alongside that line, so.
The properties, it, it was, it's like two lots. It's lot fifty-nine and sixty on a plan.
So what, what, what is gonna be the dividing line?
Uh, I don't think it's gonna be a divided line, if, if it's a two-family.
Well, if you're gonna sell it as two properties, it seems that there has to be a, a dividing line.
It's, it's, it's a two-family, not a, we're not condo yet. It's just, it's just gonna stay as a two-family. We're not selling separate properties.
So it's gonna be like a, a townhouse or something?
Yeah, sort of treat it as a single structure essentially on one lot, undivided.
Okay. Um, thanks for answering that question. Um, the, the main concern that I have about doing this is that it could, uh, create quite a parking situation, depending on who's in the property. And the, the corner that it's on between Elma Circle and Daniel Road is already kind of a hazardous corner.
It's a tough corner.
Um, I know personally from walking around that corner many, many times and sort of, uh, I have to be, uh, I would say at my utmost caution because you don't know what's coming around the corner. Uh, and the kids kind of move fast in their cars. The, the other problem is that it's, it's obviously right near Patton School. So there's a lot of kids in the morning, in the afternoon, uh, that come down our street. At, which, uh, if you have a dangerous corner like that, it seems like it would be foolhardy to make it more dangerous. And, uh, there's also a lot of sport activities, uh, during the weekend, on weekend, especially on weekends, soccer mainly, but also rugby. Uh, not rugby, cricket, cricket. Um, and so there's a lot of traffic for those activities as well. Uh, so I have, I really have concerns about the, 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 the parking, the traffic issues. Uh, if you, if it's converted to two separate families instead of an in-law situation. It, it also seems that it was, uh, the initial special permit was, was to make the in-law apartment possible. Now we're adding on to that. And, uh, it's, it seems to me that it could be, I mean, if I understand the bylaws correctly, which I'm not a lawyer, so I don't, um, I don't profess to, uh, to, to know them, uh, inside and out. Uh, but it seems to me that I've read a section where you can rent, if the, if you're the principal resident, you can rent to no more than four people. So it seems like the other property could be rented if, if, if the owners were using it as their principal residence. Um, and so that seems like it would be a more, uh, uh, I mean, it doesn't solve the traffic problem, but it's, it, it, um, seems like it would be a more, uh, straightforward way to go, at least in my view. But my main concern is, is the traffic.
Thank you.
And the parking. Parking, I mean, it, even when it was an in-law, the parking was, was kind of tight. If you have two families in there and they have kids that drive, I mean, forget about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Just your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jane Carney Senical and I live at nineteen Elma Circle, which is the greenhouse with the big garden. So rental, renters in general, and we do have some rental property. They just do not care about the property the way homeowners do. We live in a single-family neighborhood, so I, I, I think you all can appreciate the fact that when people own their property, they have this pride of ownership and they have some skin in the game. They're there, they're caring for it, they're taking care of it. Not always the case. I mean, it, there are people that are, you know, let the lawn go and whatnot. But basically, I, I do think that it's, um, concerning to the neighbors to have that uncertainty of renters and the lack of control. Okay? So that, that's an issue. I'm just gonna lay it out there. Um, not to mention Paul's point about the traffic. I mean, that's a shop corner. I mean, even the kids that live in the neighborhood that are walking by there. The cars are coming around, the kids are cutting through, going to St. John's and it's kind of a nightmare. So there's, there is a parking situation. I'd be in favor though, based on, I, I, I can see what you've got and, you know, what you're doing is helping. Helping the look of, of the property because it was clearly neglected. doing is helping, helping the look of, of the property, because it was clearly neglected. I'd be in favor of a bifurcation of the property and selling to separate, you know, the two separate homes to somebody else. Is that a possibility? Because then, you're, you know, you're not changing the trajectory of the neighborhood from a single family to a rental, you know? That's going to open up the floodgates for anybody around, I, you know? I don't know. So that would be, that would be my preferred course of action.
We live in the same neighborhood.
And you're not living across the street. You're, I know where you live, and it looks beautiful.
Yeah, you know our house. And we took four dumpsters of trash out of their house. Four dumpsters of trash. There's no trash going to be sitting around anymore, because the trash was there, was out.
I'm with Mr. Mulcahy, though. You bought the house knowing that it had this restriction.
Right.
You bought it anyway, rolling the dice, that nobody was going to complain. And people are not happy. I'm, I'm going to be honest with you. You know, I, I think you're doing nice work to it, don't get me wrong, but the rental thing, that's not what you purchased. So I, I think it's unfair to the rest of us.
The reason we are here...
I think this is a discussion that needs to happen outside of...
Yeah, I'm thinking, just in the interest of time and everything, if there's, if there's a back and forth, I think we should save it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Just a, just a few points, so I could just...
Yeah, if you, if you can quickly, sure. I understand.
They didn't pay three hundred and fifty, not that it really matters, but just so you know, it was five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and they're spending a lot of money to create that water, the water issues, and to deal with those water issues. And, you know, they can't, they're going to clean it up and make it much nicer than it's bad. It's, it's totally, it's a complete diarrhea, you know? So that's, you know, I guess, just, just not accurate, I guess. And, and again, I, you know, I got to go back to the same points. I mean, it's, it's, it was grant, it was, this board granted a special permit that no longer exists anymore. You know, it doesn't really, you can't sell it, and someone can't come in and say, I'm going to buy it as a, as an in-law. It doesn't, you'd have to still come back here.
Right.
Whether or not that even gets granted. I mean, the fact, you know, and, you know, I think there's, how many parking spaces, would you say? How many parking spaces?
We can fit four under the carport, and four more in the driveway. And then you have room to park in the back of the house as well. We don't arrange to anybody. We check backgrounds. We have other properties. We have a three-family house in Marlboro. We have apartments in Worcester, and we have, we have tenants for years. We don't just open up the house to anybody. Like I said, our kids live in the same neighborhood.
Right.
Go to Patton. We worry about those things just as well.
Sure.
We had the opportunity to buy a house for ourselves, look forward to our, you know, when we retire, so save our money. That's, you know, we got to put our money somewhere.
Right.
We're not just going to let anybody in.
Sure. And just to be clear, too, you know, this, I don't think anybody should think of this as sort of a referendum on whether you're good landlords or not. It's really just the interpretation of the, of the bylaw, but I understand what you're saying.
Can I have one, one minute?
Sure, but we, we are in terms of time, if you can keep it brief.
So the reason we are here today, because like I say, we live on a neighborhood. We have like two daughters, you know? So the first thing, it's the idea to fix the house, we, and rent the whole house. You know, the reason we are here today, because I want to do the things right. I can fix the whole house.
And sell it.
Rent for one guy, and they're going to, you know, I can, I can rent the whole house for one guy, and they can put like a different guys in each house, you know? If you guys, let's say, don't approve that for us. We rent the first one, so it's a, a nice guy, they have two kids, he's like, we're here for like a long time, they have like a company, so it's a good guy, so that's the reason we are here today. As I say, if I fix the whole house, and I rent for one guy, they can put all, let's say, they can put any peoples inside the house, and I live like two minutes from the house.
Sure.
I don't want this. I ride the bike every day on the neighborhoods with my kids, with my two daughters, you know? I don't want to put anyone on the neighborhoods. I don't want to put like the, let's say, I want to put a family on there.
Right.
Rent the house and put a family. I don't want to rent the house for like a four mans. Then they're going to do like a party every day or every night. I want to keep the neighborhood quiet.
Sure. Well, I think, you know, for Mr. St. Pierre and for the applicants, I think you can hear that there's quite a bit of debate about this. You've got a sense of the board. I think you have an opportunity to either continue to the next hearing, and again, you, you would likely have an additional board member, and that would perhaps give you another vote that might go in your favor. If you were to continue now and we close the public hearing, one vote would be, would, would sort of deny your application. So I, I suggest that to you, otherwise, I think you should probably move to close the public hearing.
And if I could add, Peter, if we, if we strictly look at the conditions for, to be met for granting a variance and go through all four and give you an opportunity to speak to each one, you know, is it, if a variance is granted, is, is it not a substantial detriment to the public good? You know, are the neighbors' rights affected in this case? In the being, you know, that it is a single-family RB1 zone? So if we strictly looked at those, at the four criteria and allowed you to elaborate on each one further?
Yeah, and the...
You know, that's where, that's where I'm, that's what I'm struggling with.
Yeah. And I can't advise you, obviously, as a board member, but I, I would suggest, if you think it might benefit from additional discussion or having an additional board member, you could continue to another hearing and the discussion could continue.
Yeah, we'll continue, we'll continue to another hearing.
Okay. So in that case, can I entertain a motion to continue this hearing? We have to have a time and a date certainly.
Yes, the next hearing is July twenty-ninth at six-thirty.
July twenty-ninth, six-thirty P.M. Can I hear a motion?
Do we want to ask the applicant if two weeks is enough time for this discussion?
Oh, fair enough. So we have, the immediate next hearing is, is two weeks from now, because this is a special hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Our regular August meeting, that would give you more time, I suppose, to prepare, but obviously you might not want that much time.
That would be August twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth at six-thirty. So I, you know, whichever, from my standpoint, whichever the applicant prefers is fine with me.
I would be unavailable on the twenty-ninth.
On the twenty, this is on July twenty-ninth?
Correct.
Okay, so that wouldn't solve your vote proposition. So I think you're looking, you'd be looking at August, I guess.
Or July. You're not here.
On July, right, because we'd be still short a board member.
You're not here, July twenty-ninth, so August, okay.
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 Does that work?
Twenty-sixth?
August twenty-sixth at six-thirty P.M.
Okay.
We're not here, I'm moved. I don't think we are here.
I'll, I'll send you an email, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So can I hear a motion?
I move to continue the hearing on thirty-four Elma Circle to August twenty-sixth. Can I get a second?
At six-thirty P.M.
At six-thirty P.M.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. We'll see you in August.
Can we have discussions relating to this before we move forward?
I think not.
Not so, not relating specifically to this, but the situation that's bringing this forward?
I think also not.
That's bringing, I don't...
Yeah, the hearings, the hearing is not closed, but continued until the next, until August, so I think we're supposed to only talk about it then.
Okay.
Proceedually. If you have an individual question, though, you can always contact staff in between meetings.
Okay.
All right. Back to the chair.
All right.
Question for the chair?
Yes.
Is it okay, since I'm not involved in the last...
Got it.
Be excused.
Yes, sir.
Excuse myself.
Please.
Thank you.
Please, you're welcome.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, please.
Good evening.
Short break.
Oh, sure.
We move, uh, move for a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, second.
All in favor? Aye.